Hey, hey, hey.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hey, hey, hey. Hi, everybody. Wow, you're still here. And Shavisa's here. Yay. Hi, Shavisa. Hugs. Can't wait to give you a real hug. And Bill, okay, you too. Take a number, everybody. Hi, folks. Welcome. Kathy and I are really, really pleased and delighted that we are having this special session here at CAR. In our conversations as the social science co-chairs, one of the things that we had been talking about is how often in the context of thinking about social science, sometimes what gets lost is how really important and good impactful program science-based or not, community practice is not acknowledged often in the context of the work that happens here in Canada around HIV. So we really wanted to make sure that we had a session where we could highlight some of the best work that's happening. And so for those of you who are speaking today, congratulations. Your colleagues and reviewers really felt like it was important to have your work be highlighted today. So we're really very pleased about this particular session. The other thing is that a lot of times, community practice doesn't fit neatly into what's normally viewed as social science. So that's kind of why we wanted to say, well, let's expand a little bit and sort of see how that plays out and what it looks like through the review process. And so that's why we're here, and that's why I hope many of you are here, to kind of have an opportunity to observe that work. So what we're -- we didn't know that we were chairing this session until -- I would have dressed prettier. I'm just saying. Although this is a pretty pink shirt, I would have even done something prettier if I knew. So Kathy and I are going to kind of be chairing from up front here. But essentially, each of the presenters will have 10 minutes to present their work and a little bit of time for questions. And I'm looking forward to kind of hearing from the folks who are presenting today. So I think, without further ado, I think we'll just go right into our first presentation now that the doors are closed and you'll all be able to hear him, although it doesn't take much to hear Richard. He's very loud and articulate in lots of good ways. So our first presentation is "Improving the Establishment of Supervised Consumption Services Across Canada," presented by Richard Elliott from the Canadian HIV/AIDS Legal Network. You're good with these? Because -- okay. That is a wonderful question.
I just reassured David his shirt was indeed lovely, but it's not as lovely as mine. I did dress fancy. Thank you for being here. As you heard, my name's Richard Elliott. I'm with the Canadian HIV/AIDS Legal Network, and I have the pleasure of sharing with you this evening some thinking that we're doing and some initial emerging findings from some work that we're doing with a couple of colleagues, looking at how we can actually scale up access to safer consumption sites or services in Canada. People, some of you will know that this has been a long struggle to get safer consumption services. It's been really a 17- or 18-year story, and it's not fully written yet, but the story's getting happier as we go. It was pretty dark and gloomy there for a while, but it's actually taken a positive turn. But we're not done yet. We actually still have work to do. I have no conflicts of interest that I think are of any note. So you may be aware that as of just a year and a half ago, really, in October 2016, there were only two safer consumption services openly operating, and I stress the word openly operating, in Canada with the stamp of approval of an exemption from the federal Minister of Health. That is an exemption that would allow it to operate without the risk of the users or the staff facing criminal prosecution under Canada's drug laws. And both of them were here in Vancouver. Well, what a difference a year and a half makes, or something thereabouts. Someone else can do the math. Because of advocacy work that's been done by community across the country on a lot of different levels, including some law reform work and political pressuring, we now are at the point where 29 different exemptions have been issued for safer consumption services, and that includes both some interim ones, which are no longer in effect, but also permanent ones. Seven more are under review at the moment. And at the moment, we've gone from two sites offering services with the stamp of legal approval to 22 sites currently offering services in four provinces and delivering safer consumption services through a variety of models. And the phrase "safer consumption services" is in fact increasingly accurate because a good number of those sites are not just supervising injection of substances, but also other means of consumption. And a number, I think it's eight at the moment, are actually incorporating some form of drug-checking service. So very briefly, I want to just give you the legal context, the backdrop against which this story has been written by many different activist authors. We remain, of course, in a legal environment in Canada that is overwhelmingly prohibitionist when it comes to drugs. And a particular provision of the federal law on drugs makes the unauthorized possession of a controlled substance a criminal offense, which means that if you're on the premises of a safer consumption site possessing those drugs because you intend to use them, then you face the possibility of criminal prosecution for simple possession. But also, the staff and other operators of that site are at risk of prosecution for what's called constructive possession because they control those premises and are tolerating the presence there of prohibited substances. There is a mechanism that I'm sure a good number of the people in the room are familiar with that allows for the federal Minister of Health to issue an exemption from this part of the law to a specific person or class of persons or specifics in relation to a specific substance or a class of substances from being subject to this prosecution. And there are two provisions at play. The one that is most relevant to our discussion here today, and is actually something that was an add-on a few years ago to the legislative regime, is one that is very specifically about exempting places that are called supervised consumption services. So I would suggest there have been four key developments in the law and the policy governing efforts to scale up safer consumption services in Canada. Of course, people will be familiar with the watershed decision by the Supreme Court of Canada in 2011 in the Insight case, after many years of litigation, that ruled in favor of the operators of Insight and ruled in favor of it on constitutional grounds, saying that it was wrong, it was unconstitutional, for the criminal law to extend so far as to block people from gaining access to a necessary life-saving health service upon pain of criminal prosecution. The criminal law should not be allowed to extend that far and have that effect, and that's a hugely important proposition. Well, you'll recall, of course, that the less happy part of the story was that shortly thereafter, well, actually, you know, during that time, there was a federal government in place that was very hostile to harm reduction, to put it mildly, including safer consumption services, and of course largely disregarded that Supreme Court decision and passed the so-called Respect for Communities Act that was in force for almost two years, that created a number of hurdles, and you see them listed here on the slide, to actually getting one of these exemptions from the federal health minister that would allow you to operate a site without the risk of prosecution. That needed to go, and I'm pleased to report that thanks to the advocacy work of many organizations, in the end, in early 2017, it did go. The new federal government fully repealed that legislative framework and replaced it with something that is certainly significantly improved, as we'll talk about in a moment, but is by no means perfect. And then much more recently, as a bit of an addendum, and again, in response to community advocacy of people setting up overdose prevention sites, and I put that phrase in quotes here because it was a very deliberately chosen term to basically create additional pressure for reform, the federal government actually creatively used its power to issue an exemption on a broader basis rather than a site-by-site basis to allow overdose prevention sites in Ontario if they were approved by the provincial government to operate under a blanket exemption. So what is the current legislative framework that I say is improved but is by no means perfect? This is what is now required by law for some organization that wants to get an exemption and operate a safer consumption service. And you'll note that there are a few things that need to go in your application. The first is you need to give the Minister of Health, the federal minister, information regarding the public health benefits that the site is intended to have. And you need to provide information, if that information exists, and please note the importance of the words "if any" in this phrase here, in this section, if there is information about any of the following five things that are listed here, you are to provide that information in your application. If, of course, that information does not exist, then of course you can't provide it. And it is not required that you provide that information if it does not exist. You don't need to go out and find it. Note that in particular in relation to both the first and the fifth of the factors that are listed here, the impact of the site on crime rates that is anticipated, and also any expressions of support or opposition from the community in which the site is located. So that's a much simpler, lower bar to meet than the previous legislation, and I don't have time to go into all the ways in which it's an improvement, but trust me, it is a lowering of the bar. But how is that playing out in practice? So we've undertaken a review of the new legislation of Health Canada's updated policy under the new legislative framework and their practice, including through a number of key informant interviews that are ongoing, including Health Canada, and we'll be releasing a full report in a few months' time. But here are a few things to note at the moment. There are a number of requirements that Health Canada is insisting upon in practice under the new legislative framework, things that you must provide in your application. There are a number of policies and procedures that are required to be part of your application package. They are not particularly problematic, in our view. I note them here, but I won't go into detail. Let me skip to the things that are more significant. There is a less onerous requirement now in terms of providing information about criminal records of people who are involved in operating a supervised consumption site, and now it is just the person in charge, basically, for whom you have to provide this information, which is an improvement because it does allow for greater involvement of peers in the delivery of these services. However, note that there is no legislative basis for Health Canada to still require this information. But perhaps more importantly is the continued requirement in practice by Health Canada to undertake a consultation with a broad range of stakeholders, and you see examples here of the ones that Health Canada anticipates that you'll mention or that you'll consult with, and to provide a report of those consultations and how you're going to address any concerns that come out of those consultations. There is no legal requirement to undertake such a consultation, and in some of the key informant interviews that we've done, this has actually been identified as a rather significant barrier and an onerous amount of work for community organizations to do when they just want to get on with providing life-saving services. There is still a requirement, in the view of Health Canada, to get some sort of letter from the provincial Minister of Health. Again, no legal basis for that requirement, although it is many fewer things that are required from fewer people than under the previous legislation. And let me just skip over the financing for an issue and get to the issues because I think I have no seconds left. If I could take two more minutes, would that be agreeable? Thanks. So there are a few issues that have emerged from the discussions with key informants. It is encouraging that Health Canada does appear to be much more flexible and helpful under the new regime than under the old regime, which is less onerous. But in our view, there are still requiring work and still requiring information that isn't legally required and that arguably is not necessary. So if we want to lower the threshold for getting these services scaled up, we ought to lower the threshold for the application process. In some cases, because you have to submit provincial guidelines regarding SCS, if those exist in your province, there are some holdovers from a more conservative era in some of those provincial guidance documents, and that can pose a bit of a problem. There are still some unnecessary restrictions at play when an exemption is being issued by the federal health minister, including, for example, with respect to assisted injection, which is not allowed at the moment in the way that Health Canada is operating, for the most part. And I would urge you to check out the poster by Gillian Kala and colleagues about the experience with the Toronto overdose prevention site, where they have in fact been documenting a significant need for assisted injection, particularly among women who are using the site. So there's a gender equity here in terms of access to this health-saving, this life-saving service. Note that at the moment, under its guidance, Ontario is actually allowing peer-assisted injection at overdose prevention sites, at least on paper. But Health Canada has not yet pronounced on the subject, to the best of our knowledge. The exemptions that are issued are arguably too short in duration, although it is true that the process for getting them extended is much less onerous than it was under the previous legislation. And of course, there are still funding challenges, which perhaps doesn't surprise us. So three quick suggestions for improving the regime so that we can make sure that our legal and policy framework is actually enabling greater and faster scale-up of these services where needed rather than creating unnecessary barriers. The first is to further streamline the information that is being required, both in the law and in the practice of Health Canada. Frankly, all you need, or all you should need to provide is some evidence showing that there's a need in the place where you propose to put the service and that there's a good basis to think it will deliver some health benefits. And we should perhaps allow the federal health minister to look into, well, have you got the right policies and procedures in place? Is this going to be a well-run service or something that's a little more fly-by-night? And that, of course, involves questions of resources. But there needs to be an understanding that there has to be flexibility in the approach here. Otherwise, those things become, in practice, insurmountable barriers to getting up and running because if you have a bit of a catch-22 situation, if you can't get the exemption without funding having been confirmed, but you have potential funders saying, well, we're not going to commit any funding until you get the exemption, you're kind of stuck in a bind. So there's a sequencing problem. In our view, it would also be a good idea to create some additional, not alternative, but additional pathways to an exemption. So at the moment, you have to go through the federal health minister. We've actually suggested that there could be a delegation of some authority to provincial or even local health officials. As long as they identified the need, then that ought to suffice for the federal health minister to issue an exemption. And here's my last slide. We still need to remove some of the unnecessary restrictions or limitations, including allowing assisted injection, not just by peers, but by healthcare workers who are staffing the site. And we could also extend the duration of the exemption to lessen the load on applicants. Thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to use my one remaining minute to take a question. Thank you.
So we do have time for a question or two?
Jason Merkady with AIDS Saskatoon. So you mentioned that the provincial minister of health basically have to sign off on this. What's your legal opinion on taking legal action when a provincial minister of health declines to do so despite, say, being in the middle of a nation-leading epidemic?
This is a great question. So Health Canada in practice, although without legal requirement, is saying we want to see a letter from the provincial health minister. It's not clear, it's not the case, as far as we can tell, that if there is no such letter, that Health Canada will say, well, that's it, we can't move forward with your application. It seems to be more of a nice-to-have, we'd like to have it, because that way we'd have a sense of where this service fits into a broader array of health services, which is, of course, primarily a provincial responsibility. If you had a health minister, a federal health minister, who was sitting on an application and saying, I'm just not going to approve this until and unless you get a letter from the provincial health minister, I think you could, if need be, probably compel them to make a decision, yea or nay, on your application without letting that be an effective veto. But to be honest, I think at least with the current government, you probably wouldn't need to get to that step. If you made enough noise in other ways, you probably could get it resolved before having to go to court to deal with it. At least, that's my hope.
Great. Thank you, Richard.
Great, thank you. And I have to apologize to my co-presenters, but I need to leave for another commitment, so I will not stay and hear them, for which I apologize.
All righty. Thank you. It is my understanding that Candace is not here. Is that true? Oh, my goodness. Okay. Hi, Candace. Nice to meet you. Candace is here. Candace in the house. All right. Great. So "Exploring the Feasibility and Effectiveness of FOCI and HIV/STI Prevention Intervention with Indigenous and Northern Adolescent Women in the Northwest Territories." Thank you. Welcome. Good to meet you.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. So I'm Candace Less, and I'm a PhD candidate in public health at the University of Toronto, and I'm defending my dissertation in June. I'm also a Nishoka fellow and the co-founder and executive director of FOCI. I'd like to give a shout-out today to my co-principal investigator, Dr. Carmen Logi. So I'm an indigenous woman from Fort Smith, Northwest Territories, and I've been living in Yalunay for the last decade. I'd like to thank the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh peoples for welcoming me and the Conference on Your Traditional, Ancestral, and Unceded Territory. I have no conflicts to declare. So the Northwest Territories, or NWT, has a population of about 41,000 people across 1.3 million square kilometers, which is about 20% greater than the size of Ontario. Half of our population are indigenous. That's First Nations, Métis, Inuit. About 25% of our capital city of Yalunay is indigenous, and this proportion rises to 80 or 90% of our smaller communities. Our territory has one of the largest, or one of the youngest populations in Canada, with one-quarter of the population under 15 years old. Youth rates of STIs in the NWT are 10 times the national average. This is the highest rate in Canada next to Nunavut. New HIV infections occur disproportionately among the adolescent and young adult population of 15 to 29 years, and young indigenous women have HIV infection rates that are two times that of non-indigenous women, which are related to factors of mental health, historical trauma, racism, intergenerational poverty, and limited availability of culturally appropriate care. Despite these concerns, there's been a scarcity of culturally, age, and gender-tailored HIV and STI prevention strategies for northern indigenous young women in the North. FOCI was launched in 2012 as a small participatory action research project in the NWT as part of my PhD research. FOCI has since grown into an incorporated nonprofit organization focusing on health promotion, healing from trauma, and developing leadership capacity, reaching over 3,000 indigenous and northern youth of all genders in 35 communities across the NWT, Nunavut, and Yukon. We offer both nine-day on-the-land retreats where we train young folks to be peer leaders and to co-facilitate our programming with adult mentors, and our school program, which is the focus of this study. Our programming uses an arts-based approach, and our school-based programs use drama techniques and visual arts, using the method called body mapping, to reach youth and address sexual and mental health, trauma, sexuality, and healthy relationships. This allows for the incorporation of cultural features while mitigating the barriers of low literacy that can be common within rural and indigenous communities. This combination enables FOCI to address sensitive taboo and complex subjects through an easily observable platform. We use a peer education model and offer one-to-two-day workshops to between 8 and 15 youth at a time in schools and community organizations across the North. This study explored the feasibility and effectiveness of FOCI. We actively recruited female identifying youth between the ages of 13 to 17 from 17 NWT schools between September 2015 and May 2016. This was a multi-center, non-randomized, pragmatic cohort pilot study using a pre-test-post-test design. Participants completed a baseline assessment before attending FOCI and an immediate post-test after the intervention. We measured three variables among participants: STI knowledge, safer sex self-efficacy, and resiliency. We had 199 participants in the study. 79% identified as indigenous and 1/5th as sexual minorities. Over half reported depression symptoms, and over 1/3rd reported food insecurity. So here's the good news. FOCI increases STI knowledge, safer sex self-efficacy, and resilience. This study provides the first statistical support for the feasibility and initial indicators of the FOCI intervention, demonstrating increases in participants' STI knowledge, safer sex self-efficacy, and resilience. We had a high study completion rate of 90%, suggesting acceptability of FOCI among northern and indigenous young women. Our study is consistent with prior research on the importance of peer educators in providing an encouraging environment for adolescents to share potentially sensitive information about their sexuality and sexual practices. There were some limitations. First, the non-random sample and lack of a control group limits the generalizability of our findings. The use of a convenient sample may have also biased the evaluation towards overestimating the benefits of FOCI. The risk of measurement error might have been high due to reliance on self-reports, raising the risk of social desirability. However, our team of trained researchers and peer leaders implemented several measures at the outset of the study to minimize the limits of self-report, including expert review of the instruments and pilot testing surveys with adolescent peer leaders. Since this study reports preliminary findings of the FOCI intervention, it is too early to assess whether the effects of the intervention hold over time. Therefore, there is need for longitudinal studies to evaluate the long-term effects of the FOCI intervention, which is our next research goal at FOCI. Furthermore, there were several challenges for implementing the intervention. Sexual health can be a sensitive topic for some individuals, so great care was taken during the development of the intervention to ensure that it was developmentally and culturally appropriate for northern youth. This attention to detail prolonged the development phase of the intervention, but it was worth it. Also, delivery of the intervention occurs in a dynamic environment with many logistical challenges, such as limited airline schedules, weather delays while traveling in the North, and unforeseen complications such as community events or funerals that may interrupt the delivery of interventions in the NWT or require flexibility for facilitators to accommodate community needs. Despite these limitations, this study offers strong preliminary evidence on the feasibility of interactive, engaging, peer-led, and arts-based interventions as an HIV and STI prevention approach, and provides foundational details to inform the improvement and future scale-up of the FOCI intervention. A more detailed explanation of these results will be published in an article in the Journal of STD and AIDS any day now. Taken together, interventions that follow a strengths-based, culturally grounded, and holistic approach appear most effective in enhancing participant growth among NWT Thank you, and please feel free to reach out if you'd like to talk further about FOCI or this study.
Some questions. Are there any questions for Candace? Sorry. Oh, okay. Yep. Microphone's on its way.
Thanks, Candace. That was wonderful. I have lived in Takiahtuk and Inuvik in my life, and I'm just wondering, just curious. Fantastic. I know how difficult it can be with the winters and the weather and all these sorts of things. So fantastic what you guys have done. Did you guys include any structured things like cognitive behavior therapy or any opportunities for people, for the participants to include, to do anything with group sessions, those sorts of things where they learn from each other? Was that included in the line-based and all the just interactions that they did?
Yeah, we focus on, well, we're trauma-informed interventions. We focus on developing interpersonal skills like strategies for grounding and mindfulness. And then all of our on-the-land retreats, we have trauma-informed mental health professionals who are available to provide counseling onsite if needed. Thanks.
I think we have room for one more. It's on its way.
Thank you very much for an excellent presentation. I just wondered, Candace, if you had a standardized questionnaire or test that you used for understanding STI knowledge? I'm just curious because I'm trying to look for one, too.
Yeah, we do. And I can connect with you after this to provide you more details on exactly which standardized test we use for that.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Candace. That was fabulous. Great. So next, already up and ready to roll. Running, yes. My elevator friend. Melene Fernat is going -- Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Candace. That was fabulous. Great, so next, already up and ready to roll, running, yes, my elevator friend. Melene Fernet is going to present on engaging communities to address intersections between HIV and intimate partner violence. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On the behalf of my team, I am pleased to present you an initiative we did to engage communities to address intersection between HIV and intimate partner violence. We have no conflict of interest to declare. According to the CHIWA study, eighty percent of women living with HIV in Canada experience gender-based violence in adulthood. So what about intimate partner violence when it comes to specific relationship and sexual challenges faces by women living with HIV, especially negotiating condom use and sexual exclusivity in HIV disclosure? One of the first study to have examined the impact of IPV in the lives of women living with HIV found that forty percent of them reported experiencing IPV. In fact, the prevalence of IPV is six to seven times greater than it is among general women population. I forget to breathe. Experiences of IPV are associated with numerous physical, psychological, and sexual health impacting quality of life. Among women living with HIV experienced IPV can negatively impact their ability to care for themselves: low adherence, drug abuse, engaging in risky sexual behaviors, and so on. However, women living with HIV who struggle with IPV usually must seek support for HIV and IPV from different community resources. These issues are indifferently addressed by HIV support centers and community organizations addressing IPV. Each of them infusing their own respective mission are opposed to adapting a collaborative strategy. Yet, women living with HIV stress the importance of addressing IPV when receiving HIV-related health care. Following the WHO recent recommendation on the health of rights of women living with HIV, which recommends services providers to offer immediate support to women who disclose any form of violence perpetrated by an intimate partner or experiencing sexual assault. The main objective of the prison initiative was to mobilize women living with HIV and community stakeholders working to HIV and IPV-related fields in Quebec in order to build a better coordination of community services as well as provide better care to women. More specifically, it aimed to build liaison between HIV and IPV organizations and facilitate the identification of common priorities for joint action to address intersection between HIV and IPV. A community forum approach was used to bring together HIV and IPV service providers and users to raise awareness about these social issues and think collectively about future direction to take. For HIV organizations from three regions in Quebec, as Montreal, Utaway, and Mauricie were targeted. With the objective of fostering liaison in mind, we recruit resource center for women living with HIV and who are victims of IPV. Seven services users and twelve community service providers participate in this initiative. First, a working committee was established to discuss stakeholders' expectation and involvement. A reflection kit was developed for participants to reflect on HIV and IPV intersection and to get ready for the upcoming activities. In addition, an inventory of services offered by community organizations was made. During this community forum, knowledge dissemination, knowledge updating, and overview activities took place. A community forum was organized by the team during this forum. Three sessions took place for small focus groups during which data collection took place. The first session on day one focused on women's support needs and HIV/IPV awareness and training needs of service providers. The second session paired up service users and providers from the same region to discuss priorities planned for action to target HIV and IPV. On the second day, we discussed priorities in terms of action to take. We used a nominal group technique to obtain a consensus. This community forum first highlighted the need for HIV organizations and support resource for women victims of violence aware of, and work in partnership with the available resources in the region. The need to clearly establish the respective role to prevent and support women. According to service providers and users, it is important to establish a service agreement between HIV organizations and IPV centers. Stakeholders were particularly aware and sensitive to the realities of women living with HIV and victims of IPV. However, service providers felt the need to increase knowledge and improve skills in terms of prevention, support, and referral when it come to HIV and IPV intersection. They reported feeling unequipped to provide adequate services to women living these realities. Training courses for service providers were identified as a priority plan of action. This community forum also alighted the need for service providers to ground their intervention in guidelines validated by key stakeholders such as service providers from both fields and women living these realities. In conclusion, service providers recognize the importance of addressing the intersection between HIV and IPV as a part of their mission. However, we know that the women tend to receive few services addressing these realities, and service providers feel unequipped provide them. There is therefore a gap between the needs expressed by the users and the ability of community to offer service that adequately meet those needs. Service providers express the need for help and support in order to facilitate screening and services among women living at the intersection between HIV and IPV. One of the strengths of this initiative is that bringing together key players working in different fields has created synergy to work toward common goals in the women's best interest. Community forum approach is a promising tool for research and to develop cross-sectoral action related to HIV and IPV services. However, this initiative has limitation, that the small, simple size had led us to focus only on three regions in Quebec. As participant involvement was voluntary, it is possible that they were already aware of HIV and IPV-related issues. Also, it is possible that some of the women who use the community services organization choose not to disclose some information during the forum due to the power relationship between them and the providers. So what about the next step? We want to establish a service agreement between HIV and IPV-related service providers, aim at combining services that are adapted to the realities of women living with HIV who experience IPV. We also want to create a training course aimed at developing HIV-related skills, knowledge, and positive attitude among service providers. And third, we hope to develop tools for screening and managing HIV, as well as for providing support to women who experience IPV among organizations providing HIV-related We want to thank all the partners invested in this project. Special thank to the Réseau Sida et Malades Infectieuses du Fonds Québécois de Recherche en Santé du Québec and au Groupe d'Action Partenariat Tragévis for their financial support. We really need a glass of wine now. So thank you.
That's amazing, actually. That's why I love the podcast. I love how hard it is.
So the French question, welcome to that?
Yes. Fabulous. I don't know, I don't really speak French. So anyway, are there any questions in French? Come on. I think the mic is on its way to you.
Thank you. Just a question about the inclusion of trans women in the project. We know that trans women are overrepresented in HIV, and also overrepresented in intimate partner violence and VAW. The VAW sector has a history of problematic inclusion, problematic inclusion. So I'm curious as to whether there's been a concerted effort to address that in your work?
We're not there, because when we try to include some services work with women victims of IPV, they say, they said to you, they said to us, "We don't have HIV women in shelters." So, you know, they are the bad victims. So even the women who...
Who provide the services?
Okay. Même si les... Je vais avoir votre traduction, okay. Même les femmes, les travailleuses du sexe sont exclues des organismes de soutien en violence au Québec parce qu'elles sont les mauvaises victimes. Et les intervenants ont peur quand les incluant, et en incluant aussi leurs enfants. Ça puisse perturber leur clientèle, mais ça parle beaucoup des mythes entourant les femmes qui sont dans cette catégorie de mauvaises victimes.
In Quebec, you see that trans and sex workers are excluded from the shelters. It contributes, it's a follow-up on the myths that these bad girls, she quotes, she put quotes, Mark, that they are, they are the kind of source of the problems of many women, but it's, it's, it's a work that is ongoing to have a larger inclusion in the shelters in everywhere in Quebec.
But thank you to bring this preoccupation, but we have a lot of work to do before we will be able to include the trans women.
The same with lesbian women. You don't want to have the aggressor and the victim in the same house. This is a pretext to give.
Thank you very much. Merci. And merci, Gilbert. Merci, Gilbert. Great, thanks, rushing up to the stage to collect her Emmy Award. Is Lisa Lazarus, who's going to present beyond the biomedical and ethnographic study of a community-driven PrEP intervention, and she will need this.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Great, so welcome, Lisa.
Thank you.
Are you good with this?
I think so. So that's to move forward. I've got this over here. I'm okay with the mic. Okay. So thanks, everyone, for coming out on this Friday afternoon. I know it is very nice outside, so I really appreciate you all being here. I'm going to briefly present on an ethnography of a community-driven PrEP intervention. So I have no conflicts to disclose. I think everyone in this room is probably more than well aware about PrEP. We know PrEP has emerged as a new HIV prevention strategy, where people who don't have HIV take a pill daily to prevent acquiring the virus. There's been a number of randomized control trials. We know all about the clinical efficacy. And in 2015, the WHO has recommended that people at substantial risk of HIV be offered PrEP in combination prevention therapy. Yet, there's still a lot of questions about how PrEP is going to be used in everyday life. So for this reason, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation have funded a number of demonstration projects in different countries globally to try to sort of understand the more real-world implementation of PrEP and how this is used in people's lives, with the hope that it'll inform policy and guidelines nationally. So I'm going to be talking about one of those demonstration project sites, which occurred within a sex worker-led organization known as Ashadea Semidi. Ashadea is located in Mysore in Karnataka in South India. They're a community-led organization that is by and for the community of sex workers. They began in 2004, and their membership has grown to over eight thousand members across the state. They offer a number of services, all community-led and community-driven, which include HIV and STI prevention and testing and care and treatment, sexual and reproductive health services. They do a lot of activism and advocacy work and outreach in the community to other sex workers. They offer social support, financial support. They have a cooperative bank. And they've also been recognized globally as a learning site, so they've been called in by other sex worker communities to help build capacity for other organizations to run their own peer-led services. And this is where I have to acknowledge that it's very much a miss that I'm up here presenting by myself without anyone from the organization. But sadly, Mysore is a very, very, very long flight for a ten-minute presentation. So I've been working with the organization on and off for the last nine years, so I've been trusted to help share some of these findings today. And coming back to the demonstration project, the idea is that PrEP would be offered alongside these existing interventions. So before talking more about the demonstration project itself, I feel that it's important to acknowledge the fact that PrEP is part of what some social scientists have called a re-medicalization of the epidemic, where attention has really shifted towards biomedical interventions. And that very early PrEP trials back in 2004 to 2006 faced a lot of controversies for not being community-inclusive. So there were some projects planned in Thailand, and Cambodia, and Nigeria, and Malawi, where communities weren't included in the planning phase, and their concerns weren't acknowledged or heard. And in those instances, community organizations rallied to shut down those trials. So this case study that I'm presenting is a bit of a response to that. And I'm moving forward with the assertion that all biomedical prevention technologies are also social interventions. So building on that, we conducted an ethnographic study alongside the demonstration project. The ethnography, along with all the work that's done by Ashadea, was community-based. The ethnography, along with all the work that's done by Ashadea, was community-based and collaborative. It's also part of my PhD research, so I should acknowledge that as well. And it included field visits, participant observation, in-depth interviews with the participants and the research team. And we ended up with an absurd number of interviews. We followed 43 participants longitudinally over the course of this study at three time points and also interviewed the project team, community leaders, community mobilizers, and the academic research team based out of the University of Manitoba, and ended up with over 150 interviews. So, just very briefly, because it's quite a large project, just going to talk a little bit about what we found. And what we saw was that Ashadea's community-driven approach led to really high levels of interest, enrollment, and retention in the study. So, the demonstration project began enrolling participants in March 2016, and it enrolled 647 women. So, the women enrolled in the study were provided PrEP for 16 months free of cost, and they were asked to undergo quarterly health screenings, which included HIV and STI testing as well as some other health testing, and to also participate in surveys. And at the end of the 16 months, 640 participants completed the study. So, that's an exceptionally high retention rate. It's quite a surprise to pretty much everyone involved, but I want to talk a little bit about why we think we saw this. So, I'm a process person, going to talk a little bit about processes. And I think that two of the things that we can address today that maybe helped with this high level of retention throughout the study was really an awareness and feasibility study that happened prior to the demonstration project as well as the community-led support throughout the actual study. So, first, a full year before starting enrollment in 2016, there was an awareness and feasibility study. So, the original idea was to go straight into a demonstration project. But Ashadea is a community-led organization that's been involved in many, many research projects. They are expert researchers in and of themselves. And instead of just starting to roll out PrEP in a context where it was very new, no one knew anything about it, we're talking about 2014, 2015 in India, people hadn't heard about it. They pushed back a little and decided to instead do a lot of awareness sessions. So, there were about nine months of community meetings where peer leaders went out and gave a lot of information about PrEP to the community, followed by a formal feasibility study. And the feasibility study has been published in plus one if anyone wants to read up about it. But essentially, what was found is that women were really interested in having access to a new prevention technology. So, as one of the women stated, "Now, if I take this PrEP tablet, I will be safe even if someone forces me for sex without a condom or even if the condom breaks. I will not have the fear because I know I have taken the precautionary tablet." So, really, quite an interest in a new prevention technology that put control into the hands of women. So, because of this interest in PrEP, the community decided to actually move forward with the demonstration project. And I should state that had the findings gone the other way, they wouldn't have rolled out PrEP. And now, moving to the demonstration project, which formally began in March 2016, I think one of the things that we can talk about in how this project differed from a lot of the other earlier PrEP trials is that it was embedded into the trusted spaces of a community organization. So, again, Ashadea is run by and for the community of sex workers, and this was a community-driven intervention that was already embedded into an organization that had peer leaders, peer mobilizers, outreach workers. The community themselves delivered PrEP however the participant wanted, so either to their homes, to the community, participants could come into the clinic and access it that way. There was a lot of support and check-ins throughout the study to get people used to taking something daily. It was a, I mean, we're all bad at taking medications. We can, it can be challenging for someone who's not used to it to incorporate it into their schedules. So, there was a lot of peer support to kind of work through the early adherence pieces. And I think also most importantly is that PrEP was offered alongside the existing packages of services. So, it wasn't just about PrEP. It wasn't just about delivering a new pill. It was really about meeting community needs, whatever they may be, in all of the ways. So, PrEP actually offered an opportunity to reconnect to a lot of the community members who maybe weren't as engaged with the organization over time, who maybe had lost touch, and provided a way for community mobilizers and leaders to really offer whatever supports were necessary. So, what's next? The official follow-up ended just last month in March, so the last of the participants finished their 16-months follow-up. And PrEP is still not actually quite available in India, but the project was quite a success, and women still want access to PrEP. Ashadea is an activist organization. They have a lot of experience advocating at the national level, so they've started to think through and talk about how they're going to advocate for PrEP to be included in the national program. You can see there's a clipping from a media event they had. And I should say that all the photos that were included were also taken for dissemination purposes, so there's no issues of confidentiality there. They're really part of the organization's strategy to start getting the message out. And as one of the women said, "PrEP is as important as condoms. This should continue and more women should get it. I wish that it has continued and it should not be stopped. We will be able to look after our family better if this continues, so please tell the big people and ensure that this is not stopped at all." So, part of the strategy is to get the message out about the project, which is what I'm doing today. And finally, just linking back to this session on impactful community research, I think we talk a lot about community-based research and community involvement, but I don't know that we talk too much about community-led clinical interventions. So, this is a really nice example showing that community themselves can really lead biomedical clinical interventions and know how to go out and reach their community and offer the supports necessary. So, just my little plug, that communities should be partners and must be partners in planning and implementation when considering new prevention and treatment technologies. So, I just want to thank everyone at Ashadea for both their work on the project, as it was a collaborative, community-based project, and as well as for participating in the study, and acknowledge my funding sources. And then, I am very happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Do we have any questions from the crowd?
No questions?
What?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. We have thumbs up?
Okay.
So, that's good.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I should take this, but leave this for you.
Thank you, Lisa. Fabulous. Great. And we have one more presentation. Everyone's eager to get up here. Come on up. So, Pooja Alualya, am I saying that? Yeah, okay, is about to present on Environmental Scan of Rehabilitation and Mental Health Services That Support People Living and Aging With HIV in Canada. Welcome. Yeah. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, that works. Hi, everyone. Thanks for staying for the absolute last presentation of the day. I wish I could offer candy or something like that. So, yes, thank you for being here. That's my conflict of interest. So, my name is Pooja, and I work for an organization called Realise. We're an organization that is extremely interested in working with frontline organizations, researchers, people living with HIV, clinicians, et cetera. We like to bring people from lots of different sectors together to work towards quality of life for people living with HIV. I am here presenting on behalf of two of my colleagues who could not make it, Kate Merzen and Wendy Porch. And this is a joint project that we did that's focused on three of our main areas: rehabilitation, mental health, and aging. So, just a quick background, it's been well documented that people living and aging with HIV would benefit from increased access to rehabilitation services, increased access to mental health services, and that people living and aging with HIV experience uncertainty related to aging and changing health needs as they age. So, the purpose of this scan was to understand the national landscape of services related to rehabilitation, mental health, and aging, provided at community-based organizational level. And it was one small step in larger projects that had the overall goal of informing the development of programs and resources. So, we started last summer developing some draft survey questions. It was done in Survey Monkey. We took the questions to some community members that were volunteer with our organization. Questions were finalized and translated to French. And then, we had the task of identifying every single HIV, HCV, and STBBI organization that had an internet presence. And so, we went through each province and each territory to try and make sure that we captured everyone we could and went through membership organizations like the Pacific AIDS Network to really get a full picture. From there, we determined executive director email addresses, sent an invitation letter, a follow-up email 10 days after that initial email, and the survey was open for about three weeks. So, just to give you an idea, it's probably a very blurry slide. We had some demographic questions in Survey Monkey, and then, we had three program areas: the rehabilitation and wellness, mental health, and aging. And for each area, we had two questions. And we listed a bunch of different programs and services we were interested in with the option of "other" to allow people to answer when we weren't able to capture everything. And so, we asked them which services and programs they offered, and the options were, "Yes, we currently offer it," "No, we don't currently offer it, but we do feel it is, would be helpful for our clients," and "Just no, we don't offer it." The follow-up question to each program area was delving deeper into why the programs weren't offered. And the reasons we sort of provided were cost, that it was seasonally offered throughout the year, space limitations, not enough clients are interested, not enough human resources, expertise concerns. And then, again, we had an "other" for people to comment when the options we provided weren't capturing their information. So, we had sent out 133 invitations and had 56 organizations filling out the survey, which I thought was pretty good. So, I'm going to go through the survey results. This was the, just the first demographic question that we had, asking what clients, their populations that they served, sort of compromised, and the majority were people living with HIV, followed by people living with HCV and people living with other sexually transmitted and blood-borne infections. And the list that you see there is the open-ended when we wrote "other," and so, some of the organizations felt that it wasn't captured, so they wrote those out. So, I'm going to go through those results through each of the three areas. So, for rehabilitation and wellness, the most commonly offered programs were chronic disease self-management programs, massage therapy, meditation, and yoga. However, even though those are the most commonly offered, only 10 or 11 of the responding organizations said they offered them, so that's still really far less than 50%. And the most common reason that organizations said they weren't being offered was because it wasn't part of their organizational mandate. When it came to mental health programs and services, there was a lot more organizations offering different kinds of services, but the majority of them were peer support groups and peer-led interventions and case management. When it came to aging, the questions were a little bit different. We wanted to know whether they offered the program specifically for people who were over the age of 50, or if they offered the program in general and thought it would be helpful for people of all ages. And the only, of the organizations that responded, only seven, 15%, reported offering programs specifically for older adults. And those were in the form of peer support groups and group workshops on preparing for the future. And the most common reason, sorry, I don't think I mentioned it for the mental health, the most common reason for mental health programs not being offered was because not being part of the organizational mandate. And for the older adult programming, it was not enough staff. So, some of the things, as I mentioned previously, we already know that rehabilitation and wellness programs and services have been demonstrated to be important for people living with HIV in the community. However, the survey shows that at a national level, they're really not being offered. So, the mandate was the reason that most people said they weren't able to offer it, but the second most common reason organizations weren't able to offer it was not enough expertise. And that sort of provides a solid base for the next step of the project related to rehab, which is developing a resource manual for frontline organizations about rehab and wellness and how they can incorporate it into their programming. When it came to mental health, it confirmed our impression that mental health services offered by community organizations are most often peer groups or case management style rather than formal one-on-one counseling with a mental health professional. And interestingly enough, a survey was done at the same time and sent to mental health organizations, and it demonstrated that mental health organizations as a whole have very little knowledge of HIV and the related impacts on mental health. And so, these two surveys combined sort of strengthened the next step related to mental health, which is making connections between the mental health sectors and the HIV sectors and running a workshop with people from both sides to sort of foster collaboration and information sharing. And when it came to aging, very few frontline organizations were offering programming specific to people over the age of 50. And this is despite the reality of a rapidly aging population of people living with HIV in Canada and the evidence that HIV and aging-related uncertainty can be disabling. Being able to offer clients tools to guide them through advanced care planning process may help alleviate pressures. So, this is because a lot of times the organizations said they didn't have the human resources to develop these programs. So, my colleague Kate is in the process of developing a training curriculum on uncertainty to provide to frontline organizations. So, some of the interesting things that came up for me was that a lot of organizations indicated that these programs were not part of their mandate, and I really wanted to understand what that really means. Is it a mandate that's, has that been looked at recently? Is it demand-driven by the client? Is it funder-driven by what the funder wants the mandate to be? Is it, it was interesting, as a physiotherapist myself, a lot of organizations said yoga was part of their mandate but not Pilates. But as a physio, I don't see the split there. But is it because Pilates is not as well-known? So, all these other questions are coming up. That would be interesting to sort of reach out to the frontline organizations to find out a little bit more. And that's actually one of our next steps as well, is we ask for email addresses for any organizations willing to answer further questions. And then, for the organizations, it was mostly in Toronto situated these answers came up, but a lot of the organizations from Toronto said they weren't offering a program because another agency was offering it. But a lot of agencies from Toronto said that. So, it'd be interesting to find out, is that what they're assuming that someone's offering, or is it actually being happening? Which are these organizations that, what are the organizations that are actually offering these programs? And then, yeah. So, like I said previously, the scan is a first step in a larger initiative related to rehab and wellness, mental health, and aging. And we're developing how-to guides, training programs, and a train-the-trainer workshop. So, if you want to reach out to myself or my colleagues, the information's there and any questions?
Are there any questions there?
There are so many questions.
So many questions. Okay.
Thank you for a great presentation. I might have missed it, but did you actually ask if they had specific occupational therapy and physical therapy services and if they had, if they employed or had them on the team? Because I didn't see that in the presentation.
So, yeah, I didn't, time constraints, but we did ask under the rehabilitation... Sorry, that's better, yes. Under the rehabilitation and wellness offerings, we did list physical therapy and occupational therapy as services or programs. We didn't actually look into whether they had it on staff, but my understanding is there are only two organizations... But my understanding is there are only two organizations in Canada that do have PT or OT on staff, one being Nine Circles with an occupational therapist, and one being Casey House, where I was the physiotherapist. So if I'm, if there's anywhere else, let me know. I'd love to get in touch with them, but that's my understanding. Yeah.
Thanks for the, thanks for the, for this. And great work, continued work with Realise. This is a question regarding young people aging with HIV. Understanding that a lot of the, a lot of the work, a lot of the research, just reading and also following, we're working with adult-aged or those over 50, was there any, was there any work or any outreach done to address those who are born with or much younger who are aging with HIV?
Thank you for the question. It's extremely valid. This project itself only looked at people 50 or 50-plus when related to aging. However, as an organization, we're going through a strategic planning process. And we're having the questions and the discussions right now about the whole concept of aging and what that means if you're 25 years old and you were born with HIV versus 50 and then positive for 25 years. They're two very different kinds of aging, but the virus and the stigma and the social, the impacts are different but same. And so we're trying to figure out how to work that into our strategic plan for the future.
Really great presentation. I have two questions, if I'm allowed that. So my first question is, so you only emailed the EDs?
Yeah.
Is that like, because the response rate was not, you know, as an ED, but it wasn't very good. So I'm wondering, like, was there any consideration of, like, reaching out to sort of like the program coordinators or the program managers and going kind of more straight to the source, rather than focusing on the, at the ED level?
We had those discussions. And honestly, I feel like the organizations were getting a lot of surveys. And we tried, wanted to try and streamline it a little bit. And then the other issue was finding the email addresses. A lot of organizations, it's kind of difficult to find the email addresses. And we don't really know, the sort of job titles are more difficult. So going with the ED was just an easier way to do things. But we do recognize that the manager of program services would probably, might have some more information. In the invite letter, we did say, and it's whether people read it or not, we did say that it's "other", if there's someone else who's better suited to fill out the survey, please share it with them.
And, sorry. Oh, my, my, my second question's really more of a comment. So I'm also working with Kate and Realise and Sharon Walmsley and Ron. And we're going to be doing a survey that's going to be looking at the needs of people that are aging with HIV across Canada to kind of get a sense of like what services are going to be needed. So that's hopefully going to be coming at some point. So that will be helpful to add to this discussion.
And that's a really exciting survey.
We'll see. Passing a date.
Thank you. Hi, as one of the EDs who filled out the survey.
Thank you.
There was something I wanted to put in there at the end. I said, "You didn't ask us about workarounds", which is, a lot of us have programs where we have wellness funds or which we usually use to help pay off medical expenses, i.e. deductibles and so forth. But for several clients, it'll include things like massage or physio for people who have, you know, extreme pain, neuropathy, for example, other things like that. And there wasn't really a way to capture that in the, in the survey. And I was like, we would do it if we had the money. And here's how we squeeze it in under the table.
Mm-hmm. We had a couple of comments that actually talked about how the survey didn't capture the situation at the organization level. So thank you for those comments. They're really helpful. And it means that we do have to reach out again to find out more information.
Great. Thank you, Puja.
Thank you. We did not ask that question, but it's a very good question. For, I can't speak directly to Kate and Wendy's work in the mental health and aging side of things, but I can speak to my work on the rehabilitation side of things. In the resource manuals that I will be developing, I am reaching out to community members, people living with HIV, to figure out what services they'd like to see. But I'd also be working with the organizations to figure out how you make referrals and coming up, hopefully, fingers crossed, with sort of some like best practice guidelines. Because I know from the occupational therapy and the physiotherapy placements I help facilitate, sometimes organizations don't know when to refer. So sort of looking at all the different angles to, even if you can't, for various reasons, offer the program, that you're able to support your clients to try and attain that program or that service. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for staying so long and so late. Have a fabulous evening. A couple of things. The CAR General Meeting, Annual General Meeting, is happening now up on the second floor in Cyprus. It's starting in a couple of minutes. So if you'd like to participate in that, please do. And I think Kathy and I should put a little plug in for our social sciences plenary tomorrow. Dr. Bernadette Polly, we're very excited to hear from her. So please come to that. And thank you again to our fabulous presenters. And we look forward to seeing you all out and about. Thank you.